My lady, my lord. I have the opinion in this matter, together with my learned friend, Mr. Witty and Mr. Chiliva. The respondent is represented by my learned friend, Mr. Weir and Mr. Carter, who sit to my right, and the bar council by Mr. Vinniel, led by leading Amy Rogers, the far right of the court.
Yes.
Also present in court are representatives from some of the intervenors. For the Law Society, my learned friend, Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
And for helper, my learned friends, Mr. Bates and Mr. Morris.
Yes.
And also for the S H N A, my learned friend, Miss England. I should say, also present in court, but not robed, are the representatives from the Seventh Intervener, who hasn't yet been granted permission to address your lordship.
No.
And that's Mr. Glasgow, Mr. Kelly Strickland and Mr. Ian Gatt.
Yes, thank you very much.
There is an issue which was raised on Friday afternoon with a skeleton argument by my learned friend, Mr. Weir, for the respondent. Subject, what your ladyship and lordships want to do, we prefer to open the case and then perhaps have him deal with it at the beginning of his submissions, as long as we have a right to reply if we need it.
Yes, that seems like a very sensible way of proceeding. Our provisional view is that the argument that he raises is one that everybody ought to be able to address if they feel they need to and they have something to contribute to the debate. But, Mr. Calipettis, take your own course if you want to wait and see how the argument is put. We will hear it day by day, so everybody will be protected. But I think, let's get on with it.
Very good, thank you very much indeed. Well, the narrow issue in this appeal, as I'm sure the court understands, is whether or not the observations of Lord Justice Dyson, as he then was, in Halsey and Milton Keynes, in paragraph nine of his judgment. What I'm going to do, if I may, as I go through, is give you references. Is that's the Appeal Bundle five, fifty-nine to eighty-two, at page sixty-four. Concerning the breach of Article six of the European Convention on Human Rights, were obiter or otherwise non-binding. And the judgment reads, and I'm sure you're fully aware, but I just read it once. It seems to us that to oblige truly unwilling parties to refer their disputes to mediation would be to impose an unacceptable obstruction on their right of access to the court. The facts of the actual case which is under appeal are set out in the judgment of the Deputy District Judge. And that's at Court Bundle, tab seven, forty-four to forty-six, paragraphs two to nineteen. I'll summarise them before I go back to them a bit later on in my opening, if I may. And he found that Mr. Churchill had acted unreasonably and, contrary to the spirit and letter of the Practice Direction Protocols, by refusing the council's free service to eradicate the Japanese knotweed he claimed had infested his property and the council's property at the foot of the garden and commenced proceedings. He decided, the district judge, that he was constrained from granting the council's application to stay those proceedings on the ground that they were premature and likely to cause needless legal costs when the problem could be resolved if Mr. Churchill used the free service offered by the Internal Complaints Procedure because the learned district judge felt constrained by the passage from the judge I just quoted.
Yes.
I think, in parentheses, he decided he wasn't going to be the bold judge invited by Lord Justice Ward in Wright and Michael Wright, and put his head above the parabit. What he did do was to set the ground for an application to appeal. And his old judge Harrison referred the matter to this court and, by order of Lady Justice Andrews, the invitation was accepted. And this is now a leapfrog appeal. In essence, if the court does decide that the observations of Lord Justice Dyson were obiter and otherwise not binding on the D D J, then what we ask on behalf of Martha Tidfield is that the appeal be allowed, the action stage should allow the parties to resolve the issue between them without the necessity of very expensive legal proceedings.
And the proposal is resolution using the internal complaints procedure?
Sorry, my lord, yes.
And the proposal is resolution by the internal complaints procedure?
Absolutely right, yes, indeed. In response to the invitation by Lady Justice Andrews to intervene, there are seven organisations applied to intervene. The first, in fact, was the Housing Law Practitioners Association. And then also the Bar Council, the Law Society, as she anticipated. And also the Social Housing Law Association. And then, as I said, the C M C, the Chartered Institute and C E D A all grouped together. But they are, at the moment, not allowed to address the court. In broader terms, as far as the appeal is concerned, we have the following three issues effectively. First, what I call the Halsey issue. Secondly, the issue of whether internal complaints procedures or the council's complaints procedures should be accepted as an alternative form of dispute resolution and afforded the same protection from the courts to discourage unnecessary litigation with a concomitant drain on councils diminishing budgets and the courts expanding workload.
Well, Mr. Calipettis, that's a rather tendentious way of phrasing the issue. The issue maybe are I C Ps a form of A D R. But if so, what do we mean by A D R? Are you taking the word, the term, from the P D itself?
I am, to a certain extent, my lord. It's, if you forgive me, my opinion, that the A is unnecessary. It's caused lots of trouble over the years, from alarming drop in revenue to alternative, to amenable, to amicable. It doesn't, the adjective doesn't add anything. And it will be our submission to your lordships, your ladyship, that in the modern world, twenty years after Halsey, everybody has turned their minds to dispute resolution, pure and simple. And it will be our case that a complaints procedure is necessary.
The point I was putting to you is that the P D provides, at paragraph three, the relevant practice direction, that before commencing proceedings, the court will expect parties to have exchanged sufficient information to consider a form of alternative dispute resolution, brackets, A D R, to assist with settlement. And my question is, when you talk about A D R, are you saying that that is the form in which the term A D R is used there? And are you saying that it should be construed more broadly? Or what are you saying? Because it's in the practice direction.
It is in the practice direction. It will be our submission, my lord, that the, if you look at all the protocols, there is no exhaustive definition of alternative dispute resolution. And it will be our case that any form of dispute resolution, which is referred to in several protocols, could, and we say should, include a properly run complaints procedure.
There's no independent party involved in a complaints procedure?
Well, the British is that, my lord, why should there be? If one looks at the British Protocol, it enjoins parties to speak to each other and decide what the issues are, explore their respective positions. And if they can resolve it well and good, then you don't need lawyers, you don't need court proceedings at all. And if you take it further, even if that doesn't resolve the issue, it then provides enough information for any subsequent step in dispute resolution, like mediation. People say, when's the best time to mediate? The answer is, there's no simple answer to that. But what I always say, if you forgive me, is there's an axis. On one side you have information, and the other side you have costs. It's where those two meet that that's the ideal time, before issue, so that the costs don't become the issue in the mediation, which so often happens, or the lack of information doesn't become a stumbling block to a resolution.
Is there something counterintuitive about invoking a complaints procedure once litigation has commenced, statements of case have been closed, the matter's been allocated to a track and so on and so forth?
Well, then, when it involves...
It doesn't sit more neatly in a pre-action world?
It would have been much more neatly. This is what the council was asking for from the very beginning. Their first response to the letter of claim was, why do we need this?
Absolutely, but we're beyond that now. We are now in full-blown litigation with statements of case being closed. Does an internal complaints procedure sit neatly as a form of alternative or self-standing dispute resolution in that context?
My lady, I can't see why the court doesn't say, stay those proceedings before they get any further. Bearing in mind that the anticipated costs of this trial, according to the respondent...
Yeah, we've seen that, yes.
...are enormous. And you will see their precedent H, remember, it's over a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes.
Over a claim which at its maximum, on their own case, is ten thousand pounds plus something necessary for loss of enjoyment. Though if you look at the photographs, one wonders how much the back end of the garden was to be enjoyed, bearing in mind the overrun state of it at the time of the expert's view. But, my lord, my lady, the issue is that it is totally out of proportion to what this case is about, to say, let this case run. And don't forget that the precedent H estimate figures for trial are plus A T E, plus uplift, plus success fee, plus everything else.
Yes.
I suspect at the end of the day, the cost will exceed two hundred thousand for a claim, which at best we say is worth less than twenty thousand pounds, if that.
I understand that, Mr. Calipettis, but we have to deal with the legal issues.
Yes.
Because this case has been billed anyway as raising full square for legal issues. And it may not completely, but it certainly does, because in one sense, because the judge said he was bound by Halsey. And the first question for this court, as it seems to me, in speaking only for myself, is was the judge right to say he was bound by Halsey? And then the second question is, what is the true position as regards, A, A D R, properly said called?
Yes.
B, complaints procedures that do not involve an independent third party? And you say there's no difference, which is the question I was asking you a moment ago.
Well, my lord, certainly the Halsey issue, as I called it, is issue one and now a supplemental, as you would have seen. The Bar Council, as invited by Lady Justice Andrews, have answered that, as indeed have the Law Society. We adopt the Bar Council's submissions, no point repeating them all. And they've done the research, which, again, we are happy to adopt. The only thing we've added is to, I hope your lordships now have, and your ladyship has, the agreed statement. My junior and I, in Halsey, managed to find all the skeleton arguments. We sent them around everybody, and that statement was drafted very kindly by the Bar Council and we accepted. So it was never an issue in the court below. It was never an issue in the appeal. It came, rather unsurprising, on the day of the hearing itself. Your lordship looking puzzled.
I'm a bit puzzled, what was never an issue?
The issue of Article six, the human rights.
Oh, that. It was ventilated for the first... In Halsey, in Halsey. It was ventilated for the first time orally.
Yes.
The test for whether or not something is obiter may not be by reference to what was in the skeleton arguments or indeed what was said on the day. It may be whether it was a necessary part of the reasoning.
Right.
Yeah.
And it certainly wasn't necessary, because it had nothing to do with Article six. It was no part of the appellate's case, and we as the intervenor on behalf of the early argument, that we were excluding parties going to court. The issue was solely in Halsey, it was fair and simple. If you unreasonably refuse to consider mediation, you could be penalised in costs. And that decision firmly endorsed by the Court of Appeal in Halsey. And we say that is exactly what the decisions are, as the reason of the case and also the reason why we said it was totally unnecessary to introduce Article six. The only other issues in Halsey were the two that I quoted in, we've quoted in our separate submissions, that the court endorsed the principle is the obligation of every person routinely involved in litigation to consider with their clients alternative dispute rather than go to court. And that has then subsequently been written into the Bar Code of Conduct. It became part of the bar's compulsory module in the bar finals. And the only other thing was also the endorsement of an order devised by Master Unley in clinical negligence cases, which was adopted by the court as being applicable to all cases and subsequently has. And that, as you, my lordships, know, is simply that if somebody is refusing to mediate, they're required to swear an affidavit before the proceedings, which is sealed so that the court at the end of the day can judge whether that decision was right or not. And that would then go to court. And that, in essence, is what Halsey was about. But, of course, the phrase, the passage from Lord Justice Dyson has been used by several people, as we've seen throughout these last twenty years, as a reason for refusing to mediate. And all that the district judge was saying is that the application for staying is, in fact, I suspect, if I had asked him, he'd minded to grant, but for the passage in Lord Justice Dyson's judgment. I can take your lordship to the facts of the case in the judgment, if you wish me to, because I think it would be easier to deal with it by looking at the judgment itself. And your lordships will find a copy of the district judge's judgment in the Appeal Bundle.
I think we're familiar with the facts of this case. Is there anything particularly you want to highlight for us?
Well, I do, if I may, my lady, that is these. The first that the council had any indication that knotweed was growing in Mr. Churchill's land was when the letter of claim arrived in the solicitor's offices. No previous notification, albeit that Mr. Churchill had bought number nine, and I hesitate to chance this, but I go to, guestly felog, in two thousand and fifteen.
Why is that relevant to the issues we are deciding?
I'm sorry, my lady.
Why is that relevant to the issues that we are deciding?
Because he sat for four years doing nothing before then finding online, apparently, a known, known fee solicitor who wrote the letter of claim. So there's no attempt to inform the council of the fact that it was knotweed in his garden, albeit that it is their own expert. So that's the first thing you should do, is to inform your neighbour so that they can deal with it. As I'm sure that the court knows, dealing with Japanese knotweed is a very skilled task. It's a pernicious invasive plant. And it has to be dealt with in such a way that it is now a criminal offence if you dispose of Japanese knotweed strands other than in a recognised site for disposal. And covers two years in prison. And on the respondent's own case, he had building work done at the foot of his garden, erecting a shed. And apparently, according to what he told his surveyor, he observed some Japanese knotweed at the time of that building work. It still didn't tell the council that he had it, and alleging that it came from their land.
Again, it's no doubt my fault, why does that help us today? It's merits, it's forensic, but why does it help us?
It goes to the merits, my lady, that, in fact, the council have been treating knotweed on this premises since two thousand and thirteen. Premises of the belonging to the council are a very steep embankment. And Mr. Churchill's garden is at the top of that embankment. And it's the back end of his garden. His garden, if you look at the plans, if you want to see a copy of the plan, is at page eighty-six of the bundle.
Yes. So which bundle?
The Court, my lord. And page eighty-seven is the audit survey plan. You'll see the garden is split in two, just by a footpath that goes between the front garden and the back garden. And if you look at page eighty-six, you will see there the strands marked by the respondent's expert. And you'll see the shed that's referred to. And stand one is on the boundary between number eight and number nine. Stand two is in the garden number ten, as is stand five. And stand two is in the council property, evidence of knotweed being treated. And indeed, that is exactly the case, the council have been treating that since two thousand and thirteen. And stand four, similarly. That's why the surveyor assumes as a probably it came from the council land, but it's not definite finding yet. It all depends when it was found and why it was not dealt with. And some of the merits of the case concerned, had the council been informed earlier, they could have dealt with it and would have dealt with it.
Has it been treated now?
No. Not in Mr. Churchill's garden, although he received an open offer to do it. The letter of claim was treated as a notification of a complaint under the council's procedure. And Mr. Jones, who was the sole solicitor working for the council, wrote and said, we're treating this as stage one of the procedure. Would you allow us to come in and treat the knotweed in your garden?
Does that mean the complaints procedure is actually being deployed and exhausted?
Yes, not exhausted, no, it's just been deployed, but been frustrated by the refusal by the respondent to allow access to his garden. I learned this morning...
But it's come to an end. It's been engaged, but it's come to an end without resolution.
But...
It's come to an end, you say, because of Mr. Churchill's unreasonable refusal to allow access.
It's still open, as far as the council are concerned. If they want to use it, we'll go and do it for free.
Look, why do you need an I C P to do that? I mean, that's just an open offer.
Well, we don't need an I C P, but it's an integral part of I C Ps. It tells what the problem is and we'll deal with it. If one looks at the I C Ps, we can in a moment, if you wish, it's a bit clear. It covers all sorts of complaints or issues that council tenants or neighbours have.
Speaking only for my part, if you are going to argue, as I think you did when I asked you a question a moment ago, about the independent, I'm sorry, I keep on calling it independent, the complaints procedure...
Yes.
...is a form of A D R under the Practice Direction. You're going to have to show me its terms and say why you say that.
Yes, I should look at that now.
Yes, okay.
The lordship will find the I C P.
Page seven of the Exhibits Bundle.
Seven.
Yep. Six and seven. Six and seven. Exhibits six.
Six.
Sorry. In our bundle, doesn't look like it. Exhibits exhibit to Mr. Jones's.
Exhibit six.
Yeah. Then which exhibit is there? It's to Mr. Jones's first statement. S D J.
Headed concerns in complaints policy, you'll find that on page six. Martha Tidfield is committed to dealing effectively with any concerns or complaints you may have about our services.
Sorry, Mr. Calipettis. I've had trouble with my bundles.
Oh, right.
I've been sent two different bundles. And I'm not in the same bundle as you are. I've got a bundle called Exhibits.
Yes.
Which starts with exhibit one of Daryl Bigwood.
Indeed.
Yes. What's the electronic page?
That's a different bundle.
It's a different bundle, my lord.
Sorry?
That's a different bundle. I think you should have one that starts with exhibit S D zero, the first statement to Simon Jones.
That's exactly what I've been looking for, I haven't got it. Perhaps my J A can send me the right bundle. Got it? Yeah, no, I'll get it, thanks very much. Oh, Nick, can I have yours?
Yep, yep.
Okay, thanks very much. Keep going. I knew I had a bundle missing.
As I was saying, Martha Tidfield County Bar Council is committed to dealing effectively with any concerns or complaints you may have about our services. We aim to clarify any issues you may be unsure about. If possible, we'll put right any mistakes we've made, provide any services entitled to which we have failed to deliver. If we did something wrong, we'll apologise if possible, try to put things right. We aim to learn from our mistakes and use the information we gain from complaints to improve our services. And then as a value of when to use the policy. When you express your concerns or complaints, we usually respond in the way we explain below. Then deals with asking to provide the service and then inform a resolution. If possible, we believe it's best to do with things straight away. If you have a concern, please raise it with the person you're dealing with. They will try to resolve it for you there and then. If there are any lessons to learn from addressing your concern, the members of staff will draw it to our attention. If the members of staff can't help you explaining why, then you can then...
So this is very much a services-based complaints policy. What services were, was your client providing about which Mr. Churchill could complain?
Providing a free service to eradicate dropped knotweed on your garden, if you tell us you've got it.
Thank you. But what I don't really understand is how this is dispute resolution. What this is saying is, you can complain to us and we'll try and sort it out for you. Is that dispute resolution?
Well, if the council did nothing, because one of their tenants or neighbours said, look, we have a problem, then they're not resolving the dispute, it's a dispute. The dispute is between...
If I had an account with British Gas and they sent me a bill for a hundred pounds and I think that the bill ought to be fifty pounds, and I write back saying, the bill should be fifty pounds, and they say, we'll make a complaint about the bill being too high. That's one thing, it doesn't matter how many terms and conditions there are about making a complaint. It's another thing, if they say, we have a disputes procedure whereby you go to an independent person or somebody we have set up to resolve the dispute between me and you, British Gas and somebody else. Now, some, some large companies have the one and some have the other.
Yes.
But they're different, aren't they?
Well, the companies have both, clearly. They have an informal dispute procedure...
Yeah.
...which you can employ, and if that solves the problem, fine. If it doesn't, then you can go to the next stage, which can involve an independent third party or E N E, all the other variations which are set out in the Practice Protocol. My lord, perhaps I'm being very simple. Ask the taxpayers in Martha Tidfield, if you have a problem with knotweed, is it better for you personally, bearing in mind that all lawyers' obligations is to ascertain the best course to resolve their clients' difficulties and interests, to have a free service done by the council or expend the best part of quarter of a million pounds on litigation to order them to do the same thing?
That's a forensic point, I'm interested in the legal point. Is this A D R?
Well, I think it is, my lord.
But I mean, that's not your opinion.
It's a dispute, it's a dispute resolution process.
Mr. Calipettis, can I draw your attention to paragraph three of the protocol, the pre-action protocol, which I think my lord mentioned to you before? It has a series of things in it. I'm going to give you time to find it. It's in the authorities' bundle at tab thirty-two.
Thank you. It's at page six-one...
Six-one-four.
In the authority bundle. One I'm familiar with. Is your electronic file linked? Does it come up? Go on.
Paragraph three, before commencing action.
Yes. The question I want to ask you is, why isn't the complaints procedure you're talking about something that is covered by A, B and C, rather than something which is covered by D? Because what it says, it seems perfectly straightforward, is the court will expect you to, A, understand the position of each party, B, make decisions how to proceed, C, try to settle the issues without proceeding. That feels like what you're talking about. But only at D does it say, consider a form of alternative dispute resolution. But only at D does it say consider a form of alternative dispute resolution. You seem to be struggling to fit the complaints policy into D. And I just wanted to understand whether that matters or whether it doesn't fit more neatly into A, B and C.
I respect your view, my lord. The objectives of pre-action current conduct of protocols is precisely that. It's the objective. The objective is to go through understanding each other's position, make decisions about how to proceed, try to settle the issues without proceedings. That's a dispute which is being resolved by A, B and C. If you can't do that, then consider a form of alternative dispute resolution.
Yes.
Alternative dispute resolution in some of the protocols is any form of dispute resolution. Perhaps I'm being incredibly thick. I can't see why resolving a dispute without necessity of going to court isn't dispute resolution. If you like to put it this way, A, B and C is a precursor to a more full form of dispute resolution involving third parties. But why should, as is being argued by some of my colleagues down at the bench from me, you must have a lawyer, as effectively what they're saying, an independent third party, usually a lawyer or retired judge. Why do you need to pay somebody to do what you can do yourselves if you follow A, B and C? Unless it's a dispute resolution. It's a very simple point, but if you're not just don't like it, then you can interpret the alternative as being, it doesn't include sitting down and indeed, it's what the district judge found, if you look at his judgment. He considered that the dispense, the council's agency, was a form of dispute resolution. If I may ask you to look at his judgments, which you'll find in the court bundle. At page forty-three. He poses the question in paragraph forty-two, which is the same issue has been raised now. The London District Judge said this, Mr Rodriguez, whose statement was filed in opposition to the application, takes issue with the CCP being described as ADR at all. At paragraph thirty-seven, he asserts, true ADR must be wholly independent process. Usually it is supervised by a barrister or former judge, competent and practised in the areas of law relevant to the dispute and wholly independent of the service. I disagree. It's not a simple negotiation, a form of ADR. So to insist, let's speak to each other on a doubt-credibility basis to see if a compromise can be reached. To my mind, the alternative dispute resolution simply means any alternative to litigation, which is nearly always less expensive. The CCP clearly falls within that meaning and it does not have to guarantee that it will achieve resolution to be classed as a valid form of ADR. And I'm reminded, of course, that the Housing Conditions Protocol expressly refers to complaints procedures as a form of ADR. It's at page six-hundred-and-twenty of the exhibits bundle.
Do you mean the authorities?
Authority. Page six-two-one, six-twenty, paragraph four-point-two. Starts with this wording, four-point-one, the parties should consider whether some form of alternative dispute resolution procedure would be more suitable than litigation. And if so, try to agree which form of ADR to use. Both the landlord intent may be required by the courts to provide evidence that alternative means of resolving their dispute were considered. The courts take the view that litigation should be last resort, where we all agree on that. And the claims should be not issued while a settlement is still actively being explored. Parties should be aware the court will take into account the extent of the parties' compliance with the protocol and making all its about who should pay costs. Options for resolving a dispute include mediation, B, for council tenants, the council's own complaints and/or arbitration procedures, the right to repair scheme and the ombudsman's service. And then C, for housing association tenants and for tenants of other social landlords, any complaints, arbitration procedure operated by the landlord. Now, it was argued, as the London District Judge observed by Mr Rodriguez on behalf of the respondent. And you'll find that at page forty-three, paragraph forty-three, on page forty-nine of the court bundle. Forty-three, the other reasons given for not invoking the CCP were threefold. First, that the CCP was not a suitable or appropriate form for dealing with the claimant's claim. B, that the CPC itself states that the defendant would not consider any concerns about matters which took place over twelve months ago. And three, that the CCP contained no provision to allow the claimant to recover his legal costs. And the district judge said, this, the first reason, appears disingenuous to me, or at least misconceived. It's based on drawing what I consider to be a false distinction.
Yeah, so we can read that. You can save your voice. Read paragraph forty-four, forty-five and forty-six.
Would you like me to read that or you have read it?
I think we have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are obviously some very big overarching points to deal with. Ultimately, we may have to come back to the specific facts here. So for the last time for now, can I just ask you this? You've told me that this procedure was engaged, the policy was engaged, the treaty has been engaged. And the procedure sets out, and we can go through it, the timetables envisaged, twenty working days. Unless there is notification, it will take longer. None of that's happened. What I'm struggling to understand on the facts is why the policy has therefore not been exhausted in the sense the process has come to an end. You're not suggesting that Mr Churchill can be forced to accept the council's open offer to eradicate the knotweed. So where are we on the facts under this policy?
The council have treated their land as they have done for the last five or six years and they're still treated lost this year, I'm told. I'm told also that in fact it's not too late to treat Mr Churchill's land if he wants it. As gardeners will know, that plants withdraw into themselves and you apply the material, the herbicide, and that sucks into the plant to destroy it. That's the process they go through.
That's right. This was treated. This was treated as a stage one complaint by the council.
On their own land?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, okay. Right, so you were interrupted by us in relation to your second submission, which was that ICP should be accepted as an alternative form of dispute resolution and afforded the same protection as other forms. And your third point, I think you were headlining. Or you moved off the facts of the case?
Which are the facts of the case, my lord? Again, the easiest way to deal with that, I think, is by looking at the judgment of the London District Judge.
Yes.
And any documents to supplement what he finds. It's part of paragraph seven of his judgment on page forty-four.
Yes.
He bought the property in two thousand and fifteen. First notice the presence of Japanese knotweed in two thousand and sixteen. However, it appears he did nothing about it. For one day in two thousand and twenty, he contacted his predecessor as a response to an advert he had seen online. His solicitors are based in Liverpool, as Mr Churchill lives in Pennydarden near Merthyr Tiddfil in South Wales. Letter came to center on the twenty-ninth of October. It enclosed a report from the knotweed's treatment running to some seventy pages and evaluation report from Apex running to eighteen pages. In fact, I think that the eighteen pages came later at the appearance of the first evaluation, which I think was sent, is on page eighteen-nine of your of the court's bundle, which is a one-page document by Mr Burrows.
So I find it confusing when you talk about the court's bundle because.
I very much am, my lord.
I'm not a lot.
The appeal bundle. Court bundle.
Court bundle.
Page eighteen-nine.
Property valuation.
It's one page.
I've got it.
Valued on the twenty-third of October. We've not undertaken any formal statutory inquiries. Our opinion is the value of the property will achieve a market value of one hundred and ten thousand. Probably been affected by knotweed, therefore twenty-five discount, eighty-two five hundred. So the value they're putting there is twenty-seven five hundred. By the time the matter came before the district judge, that had changed and been reduced down to ten thousand maximum, or even if you follow the report produced by Merthyr Tiddfil. No action need be taken but monitoring the situation because there's no danger to any structure. In the reply from Mr Jones, he referred to the complaints procedure and the fact there was an offer to remove the knotweed without charge, not only just remove it on that day of that year, but to continue coming back each year until it was eradicated. I understand that is the conventional way of treating a knotweed. That was refused. And several offers to continue were refused. And as I already referred to, there was an open offer also made by Mr Jones, which again said, we'll treat it as you've completed stage one or you're in with stage one, can we now move to stage two? Which is to come into your land and get rid of it. Again, that was refused. And the refusal was on the basis you can't force us to accept it, which I accept. One can't do so. But when it's looking at what is reasonable, what otherwise is the option. It's absurd to say we're instead going to continue proceedings which are going to cost the best part of quarter of a million pounds simply because we don't wish to take advantage of your free offer. Your lordship, it would be impossible.
Well, is that what they're saying? They're saying they want to resolve the question of what is their damage? And whether loss has been mitigated appropriately and so on, and all those legal questions within the context of the proceedings. They're not saying they want to continue with the proceedings simply because they won't have you on their land to treat the knotweed. You no doubt will say in the proceedings, they should have treated themselves if they weren't prepared to have you on it.
Indeed, because they haven't done that.
What I, I think we've got to stick to some legal questions here. We understand the facts. The first legal question is the Halsey question, as you say. The second legal question is, what is the court's power as a matter of law in relation to staying proceedings, because this is a stay case.
Yes.
To allow other forms of resolution to take place.
Well, do we try, my lord, is what the, I think the protocol was actually saying?
Well.
Take place, try it.
It would say that the issue for this court is, was the judge right to say that he did not have power to stay the proceedings as you had asked in your application notice, I think for three months.
Yes.
To enable the ICP to continue.
And.
Now, that's the legal question.
The legal, forgive my lord, there's a rise to that. He didn't consider he had the power because of the passage in Halsey.
So if Halsey's wrong, he did have the power.
Exactly.
Beginning and end of it, is it?
Well, not as far as I could say, yes, it is.
Does the court have power to stay proceedings forever?
No, for a reasonable time.
Let me finish.
Sorry, pardon.
If Mr Churchill says, I am not participating in this independent complaints procedure because I regard it as finished or inapplicable or useless or non-independent, what is the court's power then?
Well, then, if he has, if he rejects the offer of doing it for free and he then continues with his proceedings. In his proceedings, he's asking for an injunction that the council treat the knotweed on his land. It's in his power. Well, the answer is we've offered to do that.
But you're not answering the question with respect. So what if you accept that he can't be forced to accept the open offer? So assume for the moment, just assume that the the policy has been engaged and Mr Churchill has on your case wholly unreasonably failed to accept it. What is the court's power then? So there has been effectively, the policy has been engaged, the power to stay, but what now? Why should there be a stay now?
I'm tempted to say if the new procedure being proposed were enforced, then strikeout is also a power that the court has. As being an unnecessary and unreasonable procedure, but those are only in the offering, they're not actually in force. But.
So what, the scenario is, there is a stay imposed, the claimant wholly unreasonably fails to settle.
Yes.
Then what?
He goes on with his action.
Right.
Then the council is put to the cost of, I mean, it's just, I won't say that. Cost of defending those proceedings, having offered to do what he's asking for in his proceedings. If you look at the prayer, if you look at the prayer of the particulars of the claim.
Yeah, we've got the point. He's seeking an injunction to force you to do that which you are already opening, offering to do on an open basis. Yeah.
If you want the page on for that, it's page sixty-nine.
Are the proceedings an abuse? Is that the point?
Sorry.
Are the proceedings then an abusive process? Is that the point?
They must be.
That's obviously not part of the argument at the moment, anyway.
Asking for an audit of the court, whom somebody has offered to do the very same thing themselves. Unless of course what you're doing is seeking to get your costs.
Mr Calipolis, you can call me a stuffy old chancery lawyer if you want to, but I'm slightly concerned about the legality. Because what we say in this case, I mean, obviously it's quite rare, the cases of this kind, to come to this court. And what we say will set a direction of travel, almost certainly, for other cases in other situations. And so although of course we have to decide the factual question that is raised here, the question of whether ICP is a real form of ADR or not, and we actually do need to address the legal question of what is the court's power if a party is behaving unreasonably? Now, many of the authorities say or suggest that the the consequence of that, as the district judge said, is that the action will have to go ahead. But I've said you're behaving unreasonably and there will be consequences of your having behaved unreasonably. But you're still entitled to go ahead. Now, you say that that's not the legal position. In some way, this court is entitled to put a stop to a set of proceedings by granting a stay. But you're asking the court to grant a stay for something that is rather nebulous. It's all, it's finished, it's not really applicable. It's not going to solve all the issues. It doesn't solve the question of how much damage you, Mr Churchill, may or may not be entitled to. And if you're saying that we should just stay this indefinitely until Mr Churchill behaves more reasonably, that's quite a big thing. And I for one, anyway, need to look at some law to be persuaded that that is acceptable. Because Lord Justice Dyson may have gone a bit too far. That may be the case or not, but he did have a point, didn't he? That access to the courts is absolutely a critical part of the rule of law. And you simply can't say, we're going to stop you coming to the court because you are behaving badly. Sometimes even the people who want to behave badly have to be entitled to come to the courts because that's a human right.
Perhaps I've misunderstood the whole purpose of the. Perhaps I've misunderstood the whole purpose of the proposed changes to the pre-actual protocols. Because I thought the whole purpose of that was to avoid unnecessarily using court time and unnecessarily using court resources on hopeless cases. And the penalty is therefore blatantly disobeying a practice direction protocol is ultimately a strike out. That's, that's, as I say, it's in the current protocols in, if you look at the submissions by the Social Housing Law Association who deal with this in, in great detail. They list all the protocols where in fact that form of complaints procedure is recognized as an alternative to court proceedings. So they're in the protocols already. There's no protocol for Japanese knotweed. It's so the general protocol that's supplied. And the protocol, as you know, it will notice, provides specifically that failure to follow it can result in a stay. Except the practical question asked by my lady, as to, well, supposing we grant a stay? Then Mr. Churchill has to think about it because at the moment he simply said, you can't force me. But if he's faced with the prospect of the court saying, stay please, as many courts have done, and seriously consider. Sorry.
Indefinitely?
No. In reality, the season for treating it is now possibly true at the end of this month, maximum. He will stay for a month to allow him to say, come and deal with it.
So if it doesn't, he doesn't allow it by the end of this month, then what? Then he can now carry on.
And if he wishes to continue with his proceedings, he knows that he runs the risk of a cost order against him at the end of the day.
So you don't say that the court has power to stay the proceedings indefinitely until he behaves reasonably?
I, I can't say that, no. There's, there's a passage in one of the judgments that the court must allow parties, save parties from themselves. So it's a reasonable time for him to come to his senses, we would say. But effectively, the reasonable time is at the end of this month, when the season for treating the Japanese knotweed comes to an end.
Right. So as I understand it, it's still on the facts of the case. Good.
What is it?
So we've, we have read the judgment in detail and I think we are on top of the facts, but as I say.
Which is, there's more to be said about the facts, my lady.
Good.
They're all fairly clear.
Good.
Yes. And I was going to draw your attention, my lady, to the counsel procedures, procedure which, stage one, which we've looked at.
Yes.
But in fact, if you look at stage two, part of it would be ability to pay compensation.
Yes. So did this, I'm, I'm not sure we've seen the documents of engagement under the policy. Was it treated as stage one or stage two complaint?
Stage one, I'll, I'll show you the letter, my lady.
Right. Well, then we're not in stage two, are we? It wasn't treated as a stage two complaint.
Please forgive me for a second.
We need to get on to the law, I think.
The letter I'm looking for, my lady, is at tab six of the exhibits bundle.
Yes. Thank you, page sixteen. Right. We're conscious that you've got probably quite a lot of law to take us to. Now, this is just, this is the opening to setting up what the procedure involves.
If you look at the bottom, notwithstanding, affirm your client's rights remain.
Yes.
Stage two.
Yes, I, we've read this, but this is not a, this is not a letter under the policy.
Makes provision for providing for compensation if any can be shown to be needed and suffered. My lord, my lady, if you wish, I can now go to the question of ICPs and the legal definition, some of the authorities that we refer to, if you like.
Well, take your own course. Are, are you going to address us on the, on the Halsey issue or when are you going to come to the law?
Halsey issue, I'm supported by counsel.
Right.
I don't want to add anything to what they have said. Ladies and gentlemen, quite clear that we should divide up the argument between us, that's what we've done.
Understood, thank you. Right. So yes, if you want to take us to some of the law on your second submission on the ICP as a
Yes, indeed.
as a form of ADR.
There's a practice direction which we looked at, which is in the authorities bundle thirty-two. Page six-one-two to six-one-six.
Yes.
The Chancery Guide, I'm just going to give you some page numbers to start with. At page six-six-four.
Yes.
TCC Guide six-seven-one. And then there's the Administrative Courts Guide, which we quote with ourselves, and we don't need to refer to that. And as far as the protocol is concerned, again, we've looked at the protocol, paragraph four-point-one. And the wording is the party should consider whether some form of alternative dispute resolution, ADR procedure, should be more suitable than litigation, and if so, try to agree which form is to use. Now, except that the examples they give on what I call the more form procedure, mediation, et cetera, is not exclusively. And overall, as I say, and I don't suppose this is disputed. The ICP, the existing definitions of ADR don't exclude complaints procedures, some of them actually physically include them, and I refer to the social conditions protocol. And if this court recognizes, and this is the word that I would like to leave with you, the court, if I may, appropriate complaints procedure. And appropriate is addressed in our supplementary written submissions.
Yes.
And you will find that page seventeen, paragraph seventeen of our submissions, on page ninety-nine. And we suggest a criteria that this court could endorse if you wish to see it be so, that if there is an appropriate claims procedure, which follows the following criteria, then the court will recognize that as a suitable alternative form of dispute resolution. My lady, what we say in relation to that is this. The matter is amenable to sanctions to non-compliance. And that's my primary position, that if this court does say an appropriate claims procedure is a form of dispute resolution, then the penalties applicable to each of the protocols would apply as well. Then we stay, on the worst case, possibly strike out. It's transparent, effective and designed to resolve the dispute efficiently without preventing results to the courts. In the early stages after Halsey, there were some councils who introduced a procedure, if you follow the procedure, we'll try and resolve it. But that means you've got to undertake, take no further action. They're clearly illegal, and they stopped doing that. So provided the complaints procedure doesn't shut out the complainant from going to court or you do other forms of dispute resolution afterwards, then it's perfectly my respectful submission, appropriate. Delay is minimal and doesn't negate or prejudice the viability of a future claim, that would clearly have been the case there. The process takes account of the possibility that perhaps have access to legal or expert advice if required, but no expectation either side will be allowed to the cost of, if they chose to instruct lawyers. It doesn't impose a settlement, and any findings made on the complaint can be accepted without abrogating the complaint's rights. And it helps to identify all the relevant issues, supplies all necessary documents and information. So if there's no resolution, the essential elements are available for the next stage of dispute resolution, be that mediation, mutual evaluation, executive determination or litigation. And it goes back to the point I made earlier. Experienced mediators, I'm sure your court is well aware, will tell you that mediation founders, if there's not relevant information exchanged beforehand. And the purpose of the properly run ICP in my respectful submission is to prepare the way for subsequent stages of dispute resolution if necessary. Paragraph eighteen of our supplementary submissions. You know, page ninety-nine. We point out, which I'm sure is obvious to the court, that since the decision Halsey and subsequent decisions and amendments, the emphasis has changed to resolving disputes through a range of processes, including, we say, internal complaints, designed to resolve disputes efficiently, et cetera. And we are firmly of the view with a gracious respect, that dispute resolution should be an integrated whole of all possible ways of resolving disputes. The final one of which would be, as a last resort, the court and a determination by a judge. But as the court world knows, a judge or an arbitrator or tribunal chairman's powers are limited either by law, statute or the arbitral agreement. Dispute resolution requires the needs and interests of both parties to be considered as a whole. And there's no reason why that can't be done by properly run complaints procedure, which is what Martha Tidfield's procedure explains is trying to do. Paragraph twenty, for your ladyship and your lordships, to the observations of Lord Justice Murray in Maxwell. You'll find that in the authorities bundle, a tab eight on one-six. We quoted the particular passage. Processes, the development of alternative dispute resolution processes. That is processes that are not intended to be fully judicial or to be operated in accordance with civil law trial procedures or to be dependent or want to becoming a luxury of legal advice and representation. That's in two thousand and eleven. If I may say so, very appreciative of your justice memory. Hayman is a recent case. We refer to that in paragraph twenty-one of our submissions. And you'll find that case reported in the authorities bundle, tab twenty-three, three-six-five to three-six-eight. And that is a case where a learned master, Arthur Fontaine, stayed proceedings to allow a complaints procedure to progress on the basis that that was the best way of resolving the dispute. And if your ladyship and my lords would like to look at that, we can look at that now.
While we dig that out, can I just say it's apparent to all of us that there's not enough seating for everybody. I'm very sorry that you're not more comfortable and I will do what I can to try and get some chairs in over the shorter German. You're all right for now. Thank you. Yes, authorities bundle.
It's a tab twenty-three of the authorities bundle.
Yes.
Page three-six-five.
Yes.
This was, um, in plain by students, they hadn't got value for their money during Covid. I was seeking for refunded fees. I put it very simply, but it's more complicated than that. The observations that I would like to draw your laws, ladies and gentlemen, to is on page three-six-five, paragraph forty-six.
These were group litigation proceedings, were they?
Yes, they were.
Yes. Yes.
Again, there's a reference there to Maxwell. Court of appeal considered the OIA scheme and held the courts are not entitled to impose on informal complaints review procedures, the OIA requirement that you should have to adjudicate on issues which usually involve making decisions on contested questions of fact or law. And if the approach advocated by Mr. Jones was counselfully correct, difficult to see what point there would be having a scheme which was established under the two thousand and four act, not as another court of law or tribunal. It was a more user-friendly and affordable alternative procedure for erroring in students' complaints and grievances. Thus, it is apparent that the OIA scheme will not attempt to determine the legal rights of the parties in considering any complaint. However, not all processes of ADR involve adjudication on issues of fact or law, although it is true that many processes do take the strengths and weaknesses of the parties that you claim into consideration, such as WP meetings, discussions or more formal procedures such as mediation. There are many other factors why parties agree to settle.
Would you like us to read to the end of that paragraph?
Thank you, my lord.
Yes.
And then there's a reference again there to your justice Murray's comments, page forty-eight. And then forty-nine. Court has power to stay for ADR to be attempted even where one or both parties are opposed to stay. And it refers there to Hussein and Choudry in the green for tower litigation and Andrew versus Buss about his bank. And then Cowell, of course, which is Lord Wolf. Importance of appeal is illustrated in dispute between public authorities and the members of the public for whom they are responsible. In sufficient attention is paid to the paramount importance, importance of avoiding litigation wherever this is possible. Particularly in cases of these disputes, both sides must now be acutely conscious of the contribution alternative dispute resolution can make to resolve disputes in a manner which both meets the needs of the parties and the public and saves time, expense and stress. Then paragraph two-one, I accept UCL submission that ADR is still worth pursuing even where liability is denied in the legal proceedings. A very significant number of legal claims bear some litigation risk, greater or lesser for both parties. Compromised company achieve often more satisfactory. And then paragraphs fifty-five and fifty-six rely upon.
They're sidelined, so we've read them, I think.
Yes. So she stayed the proceeding to allow the internal complaints procedure to operate. And you see that in paragraph sixty. And you see that in paragraph sixty.
You see, I don't think it's disputed, Mr. Calabettis, that the court has power to stay proceedings for an ADR process to take place. It's not disputed by anybody, is it?
Well, I hope not.
So, so.
So that.
Yeah.
In one way, or very simply, if this court rules that ICPs can be a form of dispute resolution and failure to adopt one which is applicable and appropriate is a ground for a stay, that's all we're asking for. In the practical terms, as far as this appeal is concerned.
You're asking for a temporary stay of three months now, for what to happen?
I said one month, my lord.
One month.
To the end of this month.
For what to happen?
To give Mr. Churchill an opportunity to have the council eradicate the knotweed on his land. Which is what he's asking for in his proceedings.
How does that resolve all the issues in the case?
That diminution of value claim.
But that goes through, the procedure of the council provides for a discussion as to the value and indeed an express provision, if we can agree a value, we'll pay it, compensation. That's all in the Methotitfill's complaints procedure.
And just following up on my lord, the master of the roles question, I mean, I think it's fair to say Mr. Churchill's position is that Halsey is right. So there is a head-on debate on that at the moment, at least on paper.
Yes, right. And that's the primary issue.
Yes.
And I accept that entirely. As I say, I don't want to steal money from businesses in the lead of the bar. This thundered on that, and they've prepared that, and we've agreed to abide by that, his arguments on that score.
Well, I mean, just to be clear, the stay you're asking for, as I understand it, is simply to allow Mr. Churchill, if he wishes to, to proceed with the complaints procedure, not to force him to do so.
No.
Mandatory order. And what Halsey says is that the court cannot require people to, I mean, we look at the words, to engage.
No, I accept that. I accept that.
The judge here said he couldn't stay the procedure to allow Mr. Churchill to engage in the complaints procedure because it would be in conflict with what Lord Justice Dyson had said.
Yes.
And you say that's wrong.
If Lord Justice Dyson's remarks were overdone, he said because they, he felt bound by that observation. I have no power because I'm bound by what Lord Justice Dyson said.
You see, I'm bound to say the difficult bit of this case, that I found, I find personally, is precisely what the court's power is. Personally, I find no difficulty with the idea that the court can stay proceedings, even if the parties don't agree to allow time for mediation or any other form of dispute resolution, possibly, but question the ICP, depending on what the ICP really is. What I find more difficult is if the party is unwilling and says, I will not be doing it. And what the court's power is at that point. Can the court say, which Lord Justice Dyson said they definitely, definitely could not, you must participate in a mediation process?
The art of.
Or can the court continue to stay until the party does participate in such a process?
There are three things at the stage that the district judge was dealing with this. First of all, having heard and read the evidence that was before him, and having heard, he concluded that Mr. Churchill was behaving unreasonably and in breach of the spirit and as well as the wording of the protocol.
Yes.
So that wasn't known before. Secondly, he's pointed out that but for the passage in Halsey, he would stay the proceedings. And thirdly, he's pointed out that the council are still offering treat for free. So to answer your, my lord's question, if he had stayed it at that stage, it would enable Mr. Churchill to reflect upon those three actual findings made by the judge, contemplate whether he really wants to spend twenty-five thousand pounds of his own to eradicate the knotweed, and one suspects that's not the case, or whether he wants to run the risk of continuing the action. And bearing in mind, there's still a dispute as to whether or not the knotweed actually came from council land and not from the neighbour's land. So that's an undetermined issue. But the council said, we don't care about that, we'll do it anyway. So they're waving, as it were, for the purposes of settling it. Any suggestion, they're not liable, they're undertaking the responsibility. And it enables Mr. Churchill to contemplate whether or not he wants to run the risk of continuing proceedings, seeking the injunction, but he does, but at the same time is being offered with a risk on costs. Now, personally, I can't, which is best, you, why that is a reasonable call, also the court to adopt, is perfectly keeping with the protocol. All it requires is this court to agree with him, and he made the finding that the internal complaints procedure of the council was a form of alternative dispute resolution.
I think Mr. Whitwick's sending you a message.
I'm sorry. I'm referring to the CPR twenty-six point five. It is it? I'm sorry, originally.
Of course, of course. Very happy to hear from Mr. Whitwick himself, if you want, on this point.
Well, if.
Yes, certainly.
Lady, I hope I can help. The point that I'm hoping that we can make here is that the district judge had at his disposal a means of dealing with the breach of both the spirit and the letter of the pre-action protocol. Because first of all, he had CPR twenty-six point four, as it then was, which was the power to order a stay. And that, of course, has just been updated and is now CPR twenty-six point five. It has its own subsection in the, uh, the whole of section twenty-six, which concerns case management, of course. But separately and additionally to that, when he was considering what to do about the breach of the spirit and the letter of the protocol, he could and should have looked at paragraphs thirteen to sixteen of the practice direction, which, my lord, Mr. Calabettis was directing you to in the supplemental bundle at page one hundred and six. And my point to the deputy district judge was that those paragraphs already gave him the power to order a stay. That was because I was limited.
Sixteen in particular, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah.
Yes. And at that point, I was limited by the ambit of my instructing solicitor's application for a stay, which was made before more striking submissions made by me might be made here, which is that one can both stay a claim and if the preconditions in paragraph fourteen C are satisfied, in other words, a party has unreasonably refused to order to use a form of ADR or failed to respond to an invitation to do so. Where that has been non-compliance, court may order that, first of all, parties no longer need to carry on with the protocol, which is what Mr. Jones was saying, that he wasn't going to go through the steps of the protocol until they went through the internal complaints process to see if they could resolve it for nothing without the involvement of lawyers. So judge had the power to do that, judge also had the power in fifteen B to order the proceedings a stay while particular steps are taken to comply with the pre-action protocol or with this practice direction. And the particular state, the steps would be engagement in the internal complaints procedure. And then C, sanctions are to be applied. And then in paragraph sixteen, I say that he had the power, when considering what to do, to consider the effect of non-compliance. Well, the effect of non-compliance was dramatic because it was either a cost-free attempt through stages one and two to resolve proceedings without lawyers being involved at all, or it was a hundred and fifty thousand, thousand pounds worth of costs to trial because merfa were and still are saying, well, this knotweed, you have to prove it's come from our land. You also have to prove that you behave reasonably in the way that you mitigate that. And in any event, you're asking for an injunction requiring us to treat this knotweed. And yet, at the same time, you're refusing us access to your land to do so, which is entirely inconsistent with their pleading case.
Thank you. That's very helpful. That's the practice direction point.
And, thank you, my lady, it's the, um, the only wording I would direct your ladyship to, I'm sorry, to, is that the effect of non-compliance should be considered in deciding whether or not to impose any sanctions which may include the rest of that paragraph.
Yes, it's non-exhaustive.
Exactly.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Calabettis.
My, the other issue to deal with is the broader issue of compulsory mediation, which I'm happy to do so, if you want to, at this stage. In the main, we adopted, again, what the bar council had said, but with two revisions. First, the bar council does refer to the lack of regulation as far as mediators are concerned. As you will have seen from our supplemental submissions, we respectfully refer to the European Code of Conduct, which is a minimum requirement for any mediator who is registered with the CMC. And that specifically includes sort of duties that the bar council are suggesting are not apparent binding on mediators in this country. If you want to look at the European Code of Conduct.
Yes.
You will find that in tab fifty, sorry, fifty-two, thank you.
Page.
Fifty-two on page one thousand and five.
Thank you. Yes.
If your ladyship, we kind of look at page one thousand and four.
Yes.
It sets out the introduction and the statement of the commission. The purpose, and I'm dropping down to the third paragraph in the left-hand column. The purpose of the code mediation is defined as any process where two or more parties agree to appoint to a third party to help the parties. And then dropping down to the actual code itself, independent and impartiality in article two. Two-one, the mediator must not act or have started to do, continues to act before having decided to disclose any circumstances that may or may be seen to affect his or her independence or conflict of interest, due to disclose as continuing obligation throughout the process. And then there's examples of circumstances. Two-two is impartiality. And then three is the agreement. And in particular, the mediator shall satisfy himself or herself that the parties of the mediation understand the characteristics of the mediation process and the role of the mediator and the parties in it. As the submissions of the three, what I call mediation bodies that have made representations, the essential element of that is that the mediator is impartial, is not acting as a judge, does not make decisions, does not give advice and cannot act for anybody after the mediation or any dispute relating to the issue in dispute in the mediation. And then, again, the second paragraph, three point one, in particular, ensure that prior to commencement of mediation, the parties have understood and expressly agreed the terms and conditions of the mediation agreement, including in particular, any applicable provisions relating to obligations of confidentiality of the mediator and on the parties. The mediation agreement shall, upon the request of the party, be drawn up in writing. So in fact, it's a matter of practice, certainly the experience of most of us, that every mediation is governed by a mediation agreement, which is in writing.
Yes.
And signed by the parties. Mediators should conduct the proceedings in an appropriate manner, taking into account the circumstances of the case, including possible power imbalances and the rule of, and the role of law. Any wishes the parties may express and the need for a prompt settlement of the dispute. The parties shall be free to agree with the mediator by reference to a set of rules or otherwise on the manner in which the mediation is to be conducted. And then the mediator can hear parties separate, which of course happens. In the fairness of the process, the mediator shall ensure that all parties have adequate opportunities to be involved. The mediator, if appropriate, should inform the parties and may terminate the mediation if a settlement has been reached that the mediator appears to be unenforceable or illegal, having regard to the circumstances of the case and the competence of the mediator for making such an assessment. Pause in there for a second, there was, I can tell, the court, there was a very long argument about a proposal to make the mediator responsible for ensuring that any settlement was unconscion, was not unconscionable. That, of course, would have been an impossible burden for any mediator to bear, not least because the reason why parties settle the mediation sometimes are surprising, but are often not known to the mediator at all. Parties resolve their disputes in accordance with their own needs and wishes. When we're talking about commercial mediations, of course, they need always advised by lawyers. Continuing there, that the mediator considers continuing mediation is unlikely to result in a settlement. Then there's the end of the process, and then there's confidentiality. And so the suggestion that mediation's in this country, if the proposal to make all claims under ten thousand subject to mediation and that people who are vulnerable are likely to be disadvantaged, provided the proposal is properly funded, and I suspect, if I may say so, that's unlikely to be the case in the current political climate, then mediators who know what they're doing will always ensure that somebody is not being disadvantaged, either because of any physical disability, any absence of access to advice, and particularly any absence of advice on the settlement terms themselves. In my, in our written submissions in reply to the intervenors, refer to a possible scheme that the bar ADR panel is putting together. Perhaps I could just tell the ladyship and your lordships briefly what we've planned, is that senior experienced mediators pro bono will offer to train all the mediators who are going to be designed to deal with the scheme because, to ensure that they know exactly what they're doing.
That's not a bit off the point.
It is, yes. Just thought I'd get a plug in that.
Yes, noted. And next point?
Apart from that, my lord, my lady, we have no issue with the submissions by the bar council. Bar Council. That's all that I propose to say at this stage.
Thank you. We received a little bit of timetable. I think you were allowed till one o'clock on that basis. I'm sure Mr. Weir is ready to take over the cudgels. You're next, Mr. Weir, and then we look forward to Mr. Vinal and others tomorrow, is the plan. But just a heads up, we are moving ahead of ourselves.
I'm ready when.
You're ready, you're ready, willing and able. Good. Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Calapetis, and we note that you would like a right of reply, particularly on any new arguments advanced. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Weir?
Well, may I please, my lady, Lady Chief Justice, my Lord Master of the Rules, and my Lord Justice at first? If it's convenient to the Court, I'm going to refer to the defendant as the defendant and the respondent as a claimant throughout, because that's dealing with the underlying litigation and sometimes more straightforward. I well understand that there are a number of issues that you're going to want me to answer very promptly, so that I can make clear the case that it is that I'm seeking to promote.
Don't look at me like that.
My lord, I simply gaze into the middle distance. But I, I was proposing to start on the following basis by giving you a very summary form as to the seven issues that I was going to address. I'll at least get to the first one and see how far beyond that.
I'm only looking at you because I'm thinking out loud. No doubt my fault. I wasn't aware that Mr. Vinal was going to go, as it were, after you, but with carriage of the main Halsey argument. Are you content?
Very content, my lady, for reasons which will become apparent.
So you are effectively going to make your main submissions on Halsey without having heard any oral submissions on the point?
Yes, my lady.
Can I just pause one moment? I think what we'll do is have a five-minute break.
Well, lady, before that adjournment, would it assist you to understand?
Yes, the seven points you want to make.
No, not so much the seven points, though, but the position in relation to Halsey.
Yes.
The claimant's submission in relation to Halsey is that it is clear by reference to subsequent authority, principally the two CJ EU cases, but also see the European Court of Human Rights case against Croatia, that the observations of Lord Justice Dyson in relation to, as a matter of fact, it is impossible for an order for compulsory mediation to be compliant with, and here I would add in the claimant's common law right of access to the courts to the claimant's Article Six right of access to courts, that proposition is no longer sustainable. That does not answer this appeal. And that is the issue on which you have written submissions from the Bar Council.
That is exactly right, Mr. Weir, if I may say so, that analysis. The problem is that we have not heard any oral argument about how far the right goes. In other words, if Halsey is wrong, there may be something else that needs to be put in its place as to the limitation on the Court's power. And the thing that most concerns me is whether the Court could say, we will stay these proceedings until you, Mr. Churchill, do what we want you to do. That would be equivalent to a mandatory order to mediate, as opposed to the issue that is really, in this case, a stay. Now, the logical order of argument would be to hear what Mr. Vinal's got to say, bearing in mind that he's standing in loco of Mr. Calapetis, before you come back and say what you think about it. That would be logical. Is there any reason why we should receive?
My lady, my lord, obviously in the Court's hands as to the order of play, no particular issue in relation to the order that the Court prefers to take.
Well, we have the luxury of time, so it would appear we'll take a five-minute break or come back in. Could I ask, please, the Court, to see what can be done about chairs? And thank you for the gallantry that was shown for looking after as many people as possible. I hope we can find some chairs in the meantime. Five minutes, just before ten past twelve. Thank you. Mr. Weir, thank you very much for headlining your headline on Halsey. I think in the light of the way that the appeal is being presented, we think it would be of most assistance to ask to hear first from Mr. Vinal, and then indeed, all other intervenors who will be making oral submissions before coming back to you. Is that acceptable to you in principle?
Lady, of course.
Good. And, Mr. Glasgow, if there's going to be any application to make oral submissions, I don't know whether that's being heralded or not, that's something we can think about and when we want to feed that into any proposed timetable, probably be tomorrow at some stage. So, Mr. Weir, we now turn to Mr. Vinal. Thank you.
Well, lady, I'm grateful. The Bar Council, as you know, represents nearly eighteen thousand practising barristers, and the submissions which I make on behalf of the Bar Council are made after consultation with the major specialist bar associations and discussion at the General Management Council. And the SBA consultation was especially valuable in highlighting the different factors that may arise in different areas of work. Our skeleton, which is obviously in the intervenor's submissions bundle.
Yes.
A paragraph three raised what we perceive to be the key issues. Firstly, this is paragraph three on page three of the bundle, whether the Court can consistently with Article Six require litigants to participate in ADR with concomitant sanctions on refusal, and if so, whether and when it should exercise that power. And our position remains as summarized at paragraph four, still on page three. The Bar Council strongly supports all forms of ADR, but we note, the role of the Courts is to dispense justice, whereas the role of mediation is to enable and/or encourage parties to compromise, and it is important always to remember that those are distinct and different roles. Secondly, a requirement that parties engage in ADR before they can access the Court or proceed to trial is not necessarily a breach of Article Six. Not necessarily a breach of Article Six. Or I might add, in passing, is not necessarily.
Sorry, Mr. Vinal, but do you accept that that's not the issue raised by this case?
Yes.
You do?
Yes. Halsey, as I'm going on to submit, was obiter, and there will be a danger that much of what the Court says in this case will be obiter. But since the issues were raised and we were in.
Well, it's not overt in this sense, that the judge thought he was bound by.
Exactly.
Halsey. So we have to decide whether he was or not.
Exactly.
And therefore, we have to decide whether Halsey's dicta were obiter or not.
Yes.
As a matter of decision. But actually, what is sought in this case is not an order requiring litigants to participate in ADR.
It says, so it seems to us, my lord.
Thank you.
The third submission over the page, in any particular case, whether or not mandatory ADR with concomitant sanctions, including strikeout on refusal, whether it's Article Six compliant, will depend on all the circumstances, and I'll come back to what all those circumstances might include. And then fourthly, and similarly, in any particular case, whether or not compulsory ADR is desirable, that is to say, whether it's an appropriate order, which is a separate question from whether it's lawful, there must be space in which a mandatory order would be lawful, but yet is not the best thing to do. That too will depend on a series of factors, so far as we can see, probably depends on the same series of factors, but the weighing issue will be different, because you might say, I have power to do it, but this is not the appropriate case. So in various outline, those are submissions, and what I wanted to do inevitably is deal first with the point of law on Article Six and Halsey, and then go on to develop a little about what we've said about the factors to be taken into account, and also the form of a mandatory order and sanctions for non-compliance, because those issues are intrinsically bound up with whether it's appropriate to make an order in any case. And I wanted just to make a few preliminary points about the terminology that I'm going to use. I shall use mandatory and compulsory interchangeably. We don't agree with the mediator's organisations that those expressions are undesirable, at least for present purposes, at least for today, best to call a spade a spade, and by managing.
Well, it is, and of course, just for myself, I'm sort of inclined to agree with that submission. But so far as the MoJ's proposal to impose mediation for claims under ten thousand pounds, the formulation is that matters will be automatically referred to mediation, not that there will be compulsory mediation.
Yes.
Is there a difference?
I think that would depend on the sanction. Because if they were automatically referred to mediation, but there were no sanction whatsoever, I think it would be a stretch to call that compulsory or mandatory.
Could you just repeat that, please?
Yes. If it were the case that in every such case within that scheme, there was an automatic reference to mediation, but there were no sanction, were one of the parties not even to turn up, I think it's a nice linguistic question whether that is in any sense mandatory or compulsory, because it's automatic, it's integrated, but mandatory or compulsory tends to mean you must do it or else something will happen.
But the problem is probably the nature of the sanction.
Agreed.
Because under the present practice directions and CPR rules, it is possible to stay proceedings for mediation and other things, and if they're not complied with, sanctions may be imposed in costs.
Yes.
And frequently are and have been in the past. The question that worries me, I'll be perfectly frank with you about this, is whether the Court could say, you must go to mediation and participate with a full and open heart in doing so, and if you don't, we will not let you continue with your. And if you don't, we will not let you continue with your proceedings until you do.
Yes.
Because that's about a different thing from saying we're going to later mulcher in costs.
Uh, my, my, my lord, I, I entirely agree. What, what I will be submitting in due course, but it's towards the end of my submission.
Your third section.
The final.
Make sure you leave enough time for it. Yes, it's an important section, is all I'm trying to say.
Exactly. Well, I, I, I will come on and do, and deal with it, and it is actually really important, because in some ways, those are the most difficult questions, whereas some of the, the higherfalutin points of law, which are perceived are, are not so critical or are easier.
We do occasionally deal with really important points in this case, in this court, Mr Vinal.
Um, the second point on terminology I wanted to make is that, for my purposes and without casting judgement, by ADR, I mean what the Civil Justice Council meant by ADR in their twenty twenty-one report. And our skeleton at paragraph six, uh, repeats that definition.
Can we just look? Six, paragraph?
Uh, paragraph six, one of my skeleton, and if, uh, the, the Court wants the, uh, bundle reference, it's supplementary appeal bundle tab one, page ten, paragraph sixteen. But the skeleton, I think, is sufficient. In the CJC, the authors by compulsory ADR mean any dispute resolution technique in which the parties are assisted in exploring a settlement by a third party, whether an agent external to the court process, e.g. a mediator, or a judge playing a non-adjudicative role, so ENE. And so ju- just two points to make about that definition. At one end of the range, it excludes arbitration. Some people think of arbitration as a form of ADR, but it's excluded from that definition because arbitration is determinative of legal rights and obligations and is adjudicative. And itself evidently, at the other end of the range, this CJC definition excludes, uh, what, uh, it excludes internal complaints procedures.
But it doesn't follow that because officially, if you like, definitionally.
Yeah.
An internal complaints procedure is not a form of ADR, uh, that the Court does not have power to stay.
Agreed, precisely agreed. This is a semantic terminological point at the moment, but I just wanted to be clear what I mean when, because I need the shorthand, uh, ADR. Uh, and, and finally, on, on terminology, because I hope the shorthand will be useful, there is, I think, i- in a sense, a, what I call the pyramid point. There, there are in the, in the, in the courts of this country, a relatively small number of high-value, often quite complex cases where parties are well-resourced, well-represented. And if one thinks of a pyramid, at the bottom of the pyramid, there are a very la- very, very large number of often lower-value cases, um, often but not always of low complexity. And the bottom of the pyramid is critically important. It's important because the bottom of the pyramid can pose especially tricky problems because often one and sometimes both parties are unrepresented. And it is where the civil justice system most closely and most often interacts with real people, as opposed to corporations. And it is the part of the system where it is, in a sense, easiest for the wealthy and well-resourced to take advantage of those who lack financial resources, lack social capital, and perhaps have no understanding at all of the legal system. And so, uh, it, I, I know the Court would not overlook this, but it is really important that when propositions of general significance are made about what happens, we remember the top, the middle and the bottom of the pyramid. So, uh, directly to Halsey, decided in two thousand and four, and just to put it in context, the pre-Halsey cases, at least at first instance, had apparently proceeded on the basis that compulsory mediation orders could properly be made, even if one party resisted them. I'm not going to take the Court to them, but lady, um, Mrs Justice Arden, she then was in Gwynley and Kirra, which is tab one in the authorities' bundle, required the parties to pay for the appointment of a mediator. And Mr Justice Blackburn in.
Which paragraph?
Uh, page twenty-one.
Twenty-one, thank you.
Yeah. Of the box.
Just wanted to look.
Um.
Those paragraphs weren't numbered in those days.
No. Uh, and in Shirey Alm, uh, Mr Justice Blackburn, perhaps this is worth turning up. This is tab four in the authorities' bundle. Pages, bundle pages forty-five to forty-six. Paragraph twelve, the first question arises is whether the Court has jurisdiction to order a party who is willing to have a dispute mediated in the terms applied for. Uh, thirteen, there's no doubt the Courts have assumed such a jurisdiction, and he refers to the judgment of, uh, Mrs Justice Arden. Uh, and then he refers to a Court of Appeal decision of paragraph fourteen in which, uh, Lord Justice Mummery certainly appeared to proceed on the basis that, um, you could, uh, make an order directing, uh, ADR. And then in paragraph nineteen, uh, he says, in, in, in terms, I take the view the exercise of those powers, that is, the powers to direct ADR are not confined, confined to the case where the parties jointly wish to settle the whole or part of the case. There's nothing binding on this Court. To say there's no jurisdiction to have recourse to those powers unless both parties are willing. And he goes on to say that, at any rate, in the Commercial Court, this is the end of nineteen, such an order has been made even in the face of objections from both sides. Now, he went on not to make an order, so the question of sanctions did not arise in acute form. But the background to Halsey, at any rate, was that, uh, orders compelling mediation, um, could be made when, uh, uh, one or perhaps both of the parties, um, were unwilling. So, turning to, uh, Halsey, um, I, I want to divide my submissions up, and, and first of all, to explain why we say that what was said in Halsey was obiter. And so, um, what, what was Halsey about? There were two cases before the Court. The Halsey case, Halsey and Milton Keynes General NHS Trust, which was a typical Fatal Act and Sack claim, and a, uh, personal entry case Steele and Joy and Halliday, uh, which gave rise to a dispute between the two defendants as to who was liable for the claimant. In neither case had a mediation been ordered. That is important. In neither case had a mediation been ordered. And the, uh, so the cases, authorities' bundle five, starting at page fifty-nine, and at paragraph two of the judgment, which is on page sixty-two, uh, Lord Justice Dyson identified the issue, and he said this. These two appeals raise a question of some general importance. When should the Court impose a cost sanction against a successful litigant on the grounds that he has refused to take part in an alternative dispute resolution? So this was a case about costs, sanctions, or refusal to take part in mediation. Uh, but in neither case had the mediation been ordered. It had been offered by the counterparties. So it was in our submission a case about the proper approach to discretionary decisions on costs in circumstances where the ultimately successful party had declined their opponent's offer to mediate. In the event, the Court of Appeal decided that neither of the successful parties had unreasonably declined their opponent's suggestion of mediation. We find that at para fifty G in the Halsey case, bundle page seventy-four, in our view, the claimant has come nowhere near, this is a, a just below letter, just above letter H, in our view, the claimant has come nowhere near, showing that the trust acted unreasonably in refusing to agree a mediation. And in the Steele case, bundle page, uh, eighty-two, paragraph eighty-one, taking all these factors together, we are in no doubt that the, that, remember, this was an issue between defendants. The first defendant has not proved that the second defendant acted unreasonably in refusing to agree to mediation in this case. And, uh, we, we, we've agreed between us, um, that the way in which, um, that the issue about Article Six came up in Halsey, and you will have seen that, uh, it, it was dealt with, perhaps rather at the last minute, but, uh, I, I accept what, um, uh, Lady Chief Justice says about that. That's, uh, got nothing to do with whether what was actually said is obiter or not. Um, but we, we, we say, um, that it was, uh, obiter, and that we can see that from the structure of the judgment. And so, it, the, the passage which, of course, is, um, the passage which has given rise to controversy are the passages at paragraphs nine and ten. And so, uh, Lord Justice Dyson, um, begins at paragraph four, a, uh, a passage entitled General Encouragement of the Use of ADR. And that passage goes up until paragraph eleven. And he then turns to the costs issue. And at paragraph nine, he says, we heard argument on the question whether the Court has power to order parties to submit their disputes to mediation against their will. They did hear argument on that question, but it was not an issue in the appeal. Uh, and we submit that as a result, whatever was said on that issue was not necessary to, to the decision.
It wasn't part of the reasoning of the decision of the case.
Why?
The decision of the case was, uh, that, um, the question was whether cost sanctions should be imposed when a successful party had declined an offer to mediate.
Exactly.
And the question of whether you can impose mediation is not that question.
Exactly. Um, well, my lord, that's my submission. Um, and if, if, just one point on the, on the sort of, um, the, the reading of this. Paragraph nine, uh, really has a break just above letter F. Paragraph nine, first deals, we heard argument on the question, and then they say something about Devere in Belgium. And they say, it seems to us likely that compulsion of ADR would be regarded as an unacceptable constraint on the right of access to the Court. And then he goes on to a different point, but still in paragraph nine. Even if contrary to our view, the Court does have jurisdiction to order unwilling parties, we find it difficult to conceive the circumstances in which it would be appropriate to exercise it. So he's then going on to the what, what if there is power, how, how might we exercise discretion? And so thematically, we would suggest that, that, that is the breakpoint, uh, just above letter F. So in fact, all, all, all that is really said about the bald point of law and the Article Six point, uh, is paragraph, uh, judgment paragraph nine, letters D and E.
What do you say about proposition, possible proposition, that paragraph nine is, seems to have an underlying thought behind it, that imposing mediation, mandating mediation, requiring parties to go to mediation is in some way requiring the parties to settle rather than going to court?
Uh, we, we, we would say that that is wrong. Uh, because.
That did not underlie the paragraph?
No. Well, uh, pu- 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 put it, put it this way, if that was what, what underlayed, the, the, the reasoning with respect wo- wo- would be poor, uh, because, uh, compelling someone to go to mediation does not mean you cannot come out of the mediation and say, sorry, it didn't work. Maybe. That raises different issues about unsophisticated litigants in my.
What does it mean to compulsively, I'm sorry, I'm not expressing my intended, what does it mean to require people to mediate?
Well, that, 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 of course, has to be dealt with in the order, and that, that's why orders have to be very carefully drafted. And what, what we, we have suggested is it means turn up. It, it should mean turn up, because if you try to compel anything further than that, you will have horrific problems with satellite litigation, trying to decide whether people were acting in good faith and so on. But if, if I may, I, I will, I will come back to that in the, in the, in the later part of my, my submission. Um, so tha- that is why this passage in our submission is obiter. Um, I now want to turn to why we say it is wrong. Um, and can I begin with just reminding you of the text of, uh, Article Six? If you're in this bundle, you could find it at page two, four, nine, but it's a very short point. Article Six is the right to a fair trial, and it begins with this sentence. In the determination of his civil rights and obligations or of any criminal charge against him, everyone is entitled to a fair and public hearing within a reasonable time by an independent and impartial tribunal established by law. The balance of the first sentence, uh, first subarticle of Article Six is about judgments being pronounced publicly and has nothing to do with this case. Article Six Two is about criminal offences, and Article Six Three is about criminal offences. So we are in truth focused on the first sentence of Article Six One. Now, we have cited, uh, uh, five European Court of Human Rights cases, but I wanted to focus on three of them and just dip very briefly into one of them. The first is Devere, which is in the authorities' bundle at twenty-five. Uh, and you, you will recall, um, that, that, that is the, the only pre-Halsey case, and you, you will, I'm sure, recall what Lord, Lord Justice Dyson said about it at, at paragraph nine.
Twenty-six, tab twenty-six.
Yes.
Oh, that's very impressive. Is it page four hundred and thirty-three?
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh, that's, that's less, um, disappointing. Uh, so, uh, De- Devere was a Belgian butcher who had happily been selling meat in Louvain since nineteen thirty-five, until in nineteen seventy-four, he had a problem when, on his account, he made a mistake calculating his prices for meat, and that caused him to be in breach of some pricing regulations, which were themselves of doubtful legality. And the Louvain authorities, specifically the procurer Dubois, directed Mr Devere to close his shop unless and until he either paid a fine of ten thousand Belgian francs, which I calculate to be about twelve hundred pounds, or the case went to court, uh, on a criminal charge. Uh, and let's quick, quickly see what the Court said about that. Uh, paragraph forty-nine. They deal, they're dealing, so I hope page four, four, five, four and onwards. Uh, at paragraph forty-nine, under the heading, the application of Article Six One, the right to a court, which is a constituent element of the right to a fair trial, is no more absolute in criminal matters than in civil matters. So making the point that that, Article Six rights are not absolute. It is subject to implied limitations, two of which are given in the Commission's report, a decision not to prosecute and an order for discontinuance. But it's not the Court's functions to allow. But it's not the Court's functions to elaborate a general theory of such limitations. The current proceedings do not, however, concern a limitation of that nature. By paying the ten thousand Belgian francs, which the Louvain procurer d'Ugois required, Mr. De Wier waived his right to have his case dealt with by a tribunal." So the choice he had was, "Close your shop, wait till we get round to the criminal proceedings, or pay the money, and that's it." And he wanted to say that he had a defence. And so at paragraph fifty, they go on to say, well, perhaps we should read a little bit more of that paragraph, four, five, five. In a democratic, say, the first complete paragraph, "In a democratic society, two great in importance attach to the right to a court, for its benefit to be forfeited solely by reason of the fact that an individual is a party to a settlement reached in the course of procedure ancillary to court proceedings." Dot, dot, dot. They say, "At least the same degree of vigilance would appear indispensable when someone formally charged with a criminal offence challenges a settlement that has barred criminal proceedings. Absence of constraint is at all events one of the conditions to be satisfied." Here again, the Court says, confers with the Commission, and they say at fifty, "The Commission expressed the opinion that there was constraint in the present case. It considered that the applicant waived the guarantees of Article Six only under the threat of the serious prejudice that the closure of the shop would have caused him." And then at four, five, six, letter B, they, they, they deal with an objection taken by the Belgian government that, well, there are lots of things that people have to do in proceedings, and people might compromise because they're worried about what might happen in court. And at little B, they say, "Well, the prospect of having to appear in court is certainly liable to prompt a willingness to compromise on the part of many persons charged with a criminal offence. The pressure thereby brought to bear is in no way incompatible with the Convention. Provided that the requirements of Article Six and Seven are concurred, the parties are free to designate and prosecute as a criminal offence conduct not constituting the normal exercise of one of the rights it contains. Moreover, the applicant was probably scarcely apprehensive about criminal prosecution because, in fact, it was not unlikely the prosecution would result in an acquittal because, if I can put it rather crudely, the, the regulations were a bit dodgy." But they say the constraint complaint of, by the applicant, was to be found in another court, namely in the closure order. And just right at the bottom of four, five, six, they say, "Accordingly, as the delegates observed, there was a flagrant disproportion between the two alternatives facing the applicant. The relative moderation of the sum demanded, in fact, tells against the government's argument, since it added to the pressure brought to bear by the closure order." So in our submission, what De Wier tells us, and in fact, it's not terribly relevant, what De Wier tells us is that whilst a person can in principle waive their right to a fair and public hearing, if they only do so under compulsion or constraint, there may well still be a breach of Article Six. Can I go then to Ashingdon, which I hope is tab twenty-seven, begins at page four, six, three? And this, the applicant had been committed to mental obstacle and wanted to challenge his detention. And the passages we need begin at paragraph fifty-five on bundle page four, eight, one. And they refer to the previous judgment in Golda. The Court held in Golda that Article Six One secures to everyone the right to have any claim relating to a civil rights obligation brought before a court or tribunal. This right, of which the right of access is an aspect, may be relied on by anyone, dot, dot, dot. Fifty-six, they say the applicant did have access to the high court. And then to the Court of Appeal, "Any debate told that his actions were barred by operation of law." And then this is the critical passage, I think, fifty-seven. This in and of itself, that is to say, the fact that he had access to remedies, does not necessarily exhaust the requirements of Article Six One. It must still be established that the degree of access afforded under the national legislation was sufficient to secure the individual's right to a court, having regard to the rule of law in a democratic society. The right of access to the courts is not absolute, but may be subject to limitations. These are permitted by implication, since the right of access by its very nature calls for regulation by the state, dot, dot, dot. Laying down such regulation, contracting states enjoy a certain margin of appreciation. Whilst the final decision is to observance of the Convention's requirements rest of the Court, it's no part of the Court's function to substitute for the assessment of the national authorities, any other assessment of what might be the best policy in this field. Nonetheless, and this is where the limits are imposed, the limitations applied, so the limitations on access must not restrict or reduce the access left to the individual in such a way or to such an extent that the very essence of the right is impaired. Furthermore, a limitation will not be compatible if it does not help pursue a legitimate aim and if there is not a reasonable relationship of proportionality between the means employed and the aim sought to be achieved." So that, we say, in relation to Article Six considerations, is the litmus test. Can I take you very briefly in tab twenty-eight to the case of Z and others, children suing the United Kingdom on the basis of having suffered abuse and neglect, which the state had not done sufficiently to prevent? I just wanted to take you to the passage at paragraph, page five, three, one. Because it's dealing again with, it's paragraph ninety-three on bundle page five, three, one. The Court says at ninety-three, "The right is not absolute. It may be subject to legitimate restrictions, for example statutory limitation periods." And of course, a statutory limitation period is in substance a bar on one's access to the Court, or security for costs orders, regulations concerning minors and persons of unsound mind. Where the individual's access is limited, either by operation of law or in fact, and one might say in passing, where access is limited because someone hasn't complied with an order for mandatory mediation, the Court will examine whether the limitation imposed impaired the essence of the right, and in particular, whether it pursued a legitimate aim, and there was a reasonable relationship of proportionality between the means employed and the aim sought to be achieved. If the restriction is compatible with these principles, no violation of Article Six will arise. And then the final, the final Strasbourg case is Mumsilovic and Croatia, which is the next tab, tab twenty-nine. I stress, it is not a compulsory mediation case, and not, at least in my terminology, a compulsory ADR case, because of the way in which I'm using that word, but it is a compulsory negotiation case. So if we start on page five, five, four, just to get the facts from the head note, and it's worth just zoning in on the dates of it because it makes it, I think, easier to understand. It was a claim by relatives arising out of what they said was the unlawful killing of a soldier. And domestic legislations, at least latterly, required applicants to submit a request for damages before suing. So what happened was, fifteenth of January, the applicant submitted a request for their damages claim. It was rejected, and so on the fifth of March nineteen ninety-eight, they sued. But they didn't get on with things, and in March two thousand and three, the Court considered the action withdrawn. Then the legislation came in, which required a person intending to bring a civil claim against a respondent state first to submit a request for settlement. But the applicants didn't want to do that because they'd in essence done it before. So they started proceedings, second set of proceedings, the ninth of May two thousand and five. And the municipal court said, well, they couldn't do that. The action was inadmissible because they had failed to seek settlement with the state attorney's office before they did so. So the parallels, at least with the general area with which we are dealing, are obvious and relatively close, although, as I say, it was, I characterize this as a compulsory negotiation case, not a compulsory mediation case. And the judgment starts at page five, six, three. Paragraph forty-one sets out the general principles, but there is nothing, nothing new. It's just the same principles as before. At paragraph forty-three, where the individual's access is limited, either by operation of fact or law, the Court will examine whether it impairs the essence of the right, whether it pursues a legitimate aim, and whether there's a reasonable relationship of proportionality. And they cite Z and the United Kingdom. And then they go on to apply those principles. They say at paragraph forty-six, that according to the government, that's the Croatian government, "The purpose of the requirement to institute a friendly settlement procedure in the competent civil court aimed at allowing the parties to settle their dispute without the involvement of the Court." That sounds familiar, doesn't it? "And to avoid long and expensive court proceedings with an intended effect of reducing the number of cases pending before the Court. In view of these arguments, the Court can accept that this restriction on direct access to court pursued a legitimate aim of securing judicial economy and open the possibility for the parties to efficiently settle their claims without the involvement of the Court." Paragraph forty-seven, the applicants don't dispute that it pursued a legitimate aim, but they say that in the circumstances of this case, it was applied unreasonably. And the Court go on to reject that. If we go to para fifty-two on page five, six, seven. "The Court observes the settlement procedure at issue could not in any manner prejudice the applicant's claim for damages. In particular, it interrupts the running of the statutory prescription period." Just in, in passing, that, that is a reason why one has to be careful about pre-issue compulsory mediation in a way you don't with post-issue compulsory mediation. And critical point, and it's the master of the rules question to me a moment ago, it makes the point that if the state attorney's office doesn't accept the settlement, it remains fully open to the applicants to bring an action before the competent court. And so fifty-four, that's, I just invite you to read quickly, fifty-four to the end. And then before the shorter German, perhaps I can deal very quickly with the two European Court of Justice cases. Alasini is at tab thirty. Alasini is a case where, because of European directives in the telecoms area, there was, there was a mandatory prior settlement procedure. And the passages, I think, we need to begin really at forty-seven.
Page?
Five, nine, three. And they deal with the principle of equivalence and of effectiveness. And its effectiveness, which I think we're interested in, so pick it up at fifty-two. As regards the principle of effectiveness, it's admittedly true that making the admissibility of legal proceedings conditional upon the prior implementation of an out-of-court settlement procedure affects the exercise of rights conferred on individuals by the Universal Service Directive. However, various factors show that a mandatory settlement procedure such as that at issue is not such as to make it in practice impossible or excessively difficult to exercise the rights which individuals derive from the directive. And then they go on at paragraph sixty-five to say, "The imposition of an out-of-court settlement procedure does not, in the light of the rules, it does not seem disproportionate in relation to the objectives pursued."
So this is not a case on Article Six, it's a case...
Quite.
...the European law principles of effectiveness.
Exactly, which you will may find of assistance.
But it's not a...
But may not.
...point.
No, it, accepted. The...
Which, which no longer survive in English law now. Is that right?
Yeah. So it's, this is, this is by analogy and to see what is going on elsewhere. But for Article Six, really the point is, is Mumsilovic. And Menini, which arises under the EU Directive on ADR for consumer dispute, is to similar effect, starts at page five, nine, seven, para fifty, sixty-one, para sixty-six, but I don't think it adds very much more.
It's also about the European law principles of effectiveness.
Exactly, exactly. So I was going then to turn to Lord Reed in unison. Would that be a convenient moment?
Yes.
With just a few minutes early, but...
That's fine. Thank you very much indeed. To you.